I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, June 9th, 2020. This is a Prescott City Council study session. Let's please call roll.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Present.
Mayor Protem Orne.
Here.
Councilmember Blair.
Yes.
Councilmember Good.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Councilmember Rusing.
Councilmember Rusing. Councilmember Rusing. She has multiple speakers on.
There you go.
She's on a delay.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, we can. Can you please turn down the volume on wherever you're watching us, please? Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
And Councilman Sishka.
Here.
All are present.
All right, thank you. Well, welcome, everyone. Thanks for being here for this study session. We have one item today, the Arizona Eco Development Letter of Intent. This meeting is solely for the purpose of hearing public comments around the letter of intent for the AED annexation. And we will kick it off with a presentation by John Palladini, and then we will have time for the public to comment after that.
Well, good afternoon, mayor and council. Happy to be here and present the draft of the letter of intent for ultimately later on at the 3 o'clock meeting, your considerations. So, we're just going to go through it rather briefly. I think everybody pretty much knows the contents, but let's proceed forward. So, the letter of intent is a non-binding agreement, which means that it sets the framework, the foundation, the four corners, however you want to describe it, of ultimately what we hope to be is a final binding development agreement as part of the annexation and development of AED lands currently in the county. As a reminder to everybody, the process, this is the start of the process, not the end of the work. If this agreement is approved today, and approved by AED, then it begins the Planning and Zoning Commission process, which will be multiple meetings, and Planning and Zoning Commission will talk about the development, the zoning of the land, the parcels that are going to be annexed into the city, and then, once that's done, there's a 60-day comment period, and after that, the council will then consider a development agreement, the zoning, the annexation, and any other ancillary agreements that would go along with it. So, that's kind of why we're here today. So, what we're looking at is, what are we getting? What are we doing? And obviously, the big thing that I think almost everybody that I've seen comments from, that have sent comments to the clerk and to the council, have to do with the South parcel. So, this is what we're looking at. Again, this is an estimated description of the property that will be dedicated to the city, 475 acres, give or take. It will be surveyed, it will be a legal description, and the final agreement will clearly define the actual land that's going to be dedicated to the city. Just to kind of point out a few things, this is No Name Creek that runs this way, the blue line, so all of the green is the land that will be conveyed to the city or dedicated to the city, clearly covers the watershed of No Name Creek. This land here, this is 89 right here, so all of this will be permanent open space owned by the city. That's what the city gets as part of this deal. What the city also gets, and let me just point out, originally, the original proposal was almost zero acres of permitted open space. So, and a lot of folks pushed this to get 500 acres of open space. This 475 is significant. It's a dramatic increase from what was originally proposed. A lot of folks commented, I've seen already, "You should do the Save the Dells deal. You should mirror the Save the Dells deal." I'll tell you, this is awfully darn close to what the Save the Dells folks were proposing. I know they proposed some details that they'd like to see added, and I'll address those in a second, but I'll tell you why. This deal is a better deal than the Save the Dells deal, and here's why. This deal will guarantee the continued viability of the airport. It's a comprehensive deal. It's a global, universal deal. The city will get 270 acres in this pinkish area here. The city will acquire 131 acres, this orange, whatever you call it, orange area, will acquire this based on an appraisal that the city and AED will agree on the appraiser. The appraiser will be qualified to appraise airport land. Whatever the appraisal price is, that's what the city will pay. 90%, maybe more, will be funded by FAA grants. This green area here is natural open space, undeveloped open space, will allow for the continuation of the Peavine Trail up to Chino Valley. So, again, because this is a global, comprehensive deal, it's a product of compromise. Can't get everything in a deal. You get as much as you can in exchange back and forth, consideration of a contract. So, that's what the city is getting, the two parcels. What the city will give is annexation of the North and South parcel, so we saw those, development rights in terms of a zoning of the land and subdividing of the land, and gross 753 acre-feet of city potable water for development. Now, that goes to the yellow areas on the South parcel, and this area on the North parcel, as well as Section 33, which will likely remain in the county or be annexed into Prescott Valley. You see the city line here, this is state trust land, this is state trust land. The city is physically prohibited, legally and physically prohibited, from annexing Section 33. And I'll get to the details of that in a second. The nice thing about the 753 acre-feet is that AED owns 375 acre-feet of surface water rights. That will be dedicated to the city or conveyed to the city, so the net is about 375 acre-feet of water that the city will provide, once you net out the surface water rights that can get conveyed back to the city. So, here's how the water use breaks out. 168 and 1/2 acre-feet to the South parcel, which is 850 residential units and 200 resort units. 350 acre-feet to the North annexation, which is a combination of residential, commercial and industrial, and other uses intended to be commercial, industrial, a good likelihood that it'll be a medical facility or a hospital of some sort, at least as part of these other uses. That's been the discussion with the AED developer. Granite Dells Parkway, part of the North parcel, will have commercial and mixed use, 64 acre-feet, and then Section 33, as I mentioned, will have 170 acre-feet of water. Now, that's the water side. On the left column is the development rights side, 850 residential units and 200 resort in the South. This is the development rights we would grant in the North, and this is the development that you would see on Section 33. The water is tied to residential. So, if there's any desire on Section 33 to do commercial, the city would not be providing water to that commercial. Okay, so what are the conditions for provision of water? All AED lands that are provided water, both in and out of the city, will be connected to the city sewer system and comply with the city's water use rules and regulations. That includes Section 33, if it's not annexed into the city. AED pays for all of the infrastructure and impact fees for water sewer, what have you. Section 33, again, may remain in the county or be annexed into the city, that's a possibility, although not likely, or annexed into the town of Prescott Valley. If it's not annexed into Prescott, Water 33 incurs a 30% surcharge. Whether annexed or not into the city, Section 33 will comply with the city's water rules and regulations, and the effluent generated is used for permanent recharge, so consistent with the city charter Prop 400. The city will help acquire rights-of-way for sewer and water lines and other utilities to Section 33. That means we'll either work with State Land Department across the state trust land or work with ADOT to run lines down that. The cost will be, we'll agree on allocation of costs, and that's basically going to be, depending on what other benefits to the city system, those easements and rights-of-way costs. And then, this is the severance transfer language. 375 acre-feet of the surface water rights that are in Watson Lake will be conveyed to the city for recreation recharge. That's about two vertical feet of water on the lake, that 375 acre-feet, so it's a pretty significant amount of water, you know, across the lake. Some of the other issues, we'll work with the developer on a crossing extending the Fippen Trail to the Dells Ranch Road. This project is an impact fee project, so it's paid for by not only the AED projects, North and South, but Deepwell and any other projects in the area that pull building permits once those impact fees. So, the city's already accruing funds in its impact fee fund for this work here. And then, the city will use efforts to acquire that Granite Creek Bridge from the county, probably primarily for park access, pedestrian, bicycle, equestrian, not likely for vehicle And then, up at the airport on the North parcel, we'll work with the developer to provide, in this language, two access points. What it means is two operator points, is some technicalities with through-the-fence agreements that we've talked with Robin, but the point, the intent is to allow two operators to have access to the airport from that, from the, let me show you the parcel, just so everybody's clear, from the, what we call the W parcel. So, it'll help further, again, airport industrial, this parcel here, job creation, you know, sales tax perhaps, depending on what goes in here, but obviously, non-residential. So, we're looking for industrial aviation-related uses on that parcel. Last but not least, the resort. I know that's garnered a lot of attention. Whoops, wrong one. Parcels K and L are resort. All residential is west of the Peavine. I know people are concerned, they have this sort of, there's this mantra out there, resort or nothing, sort of negative language, if you think about it, kind of the connotation, but the intent of the agreement is residential west, resort development east of the Peavine. Talked about, the other thing that the agreement intends to do is allow for access, obviously, from parcel H to parcel K and L for the resort. The agreement talks about not more than one at-grade crossing, but given the topography and the land out there, there are certainly opportunities to separate the Peavine pedestrian, equestrian, bicycle traffic from the cross-traffic that goes to the resort. And we're going to work with, you know, the developer on trying to avoid that conflict, but as everybody recalls, it went from five proposed crossings to one. So, a nice accomplishment and certainly a good compromise on everybody's part. The last thing on the resort is, if it's used for something other than standard hotel, typical hotel, we have an agreement with, we'll have an agreement that figures out what it would generate if it wasn't used as a traditional hotel-resort type use. In other words, if it's timeshare or something, so the city's revenue, bed tax and sales tax revenue sustains and maintains the same level if it's used for something that's a non-traditional resort use. Oh, I also wanted to point out that there has been some comment, criticism, what have you, about the water, and I want to point out, it's really important to note that even though our current average of water, potable water, that gets returned to our, as effluent is in the 50s or 60s, new development is 90%. And so, when we talk about 90% of the water that's used in the South, used in the North, and used on 33, is returned to the water treatment plant, the sewer treatment plant, it's 90%, given our current rules and regulations. So, want to kind of clarify that, because I know we've gotten some pushback that it's not 90%. But again, we're not talking averages, we're talking real, real life and what happens currently. So, with that, that concludes my brief presentation, and I'll be happy to take any questions or turn it back over to you, mayor.
Yeah, thank you, John. I appreciate that presentation. Mr. Lamar, do you have anything to add to the presentation?
No, I'd just like to make the comment that this has been a long, laborious process. One of the things I've seen most recently with some of the citizen feedback in the right is that everybody had to give a little bit to get where we are. There's a lot of nuance and a lot of moving parts, and as John stated, the LOI is a non-binding document, it's not the end of the road. The applicant's going to have to go through all of the normal planning commission rig em rau, so there'll be plenty of opportunity for public comment and tweaking around the margins when it's necessary or makes sense. At the end of the day, all I'd like to say is that everybody came off their set opinion enough to get to where we are today. And as we talk about the issues around the margin, I think it's really important to remember and respect the fact that we have a deal in principle, that all parties are comfortable with, and you don't want to go backwards in the interest of going forwards. In other words, don't lose this because of some issues that I would classify as fairly minor. Those are my wonderful words of wisdom.
All right.
And personally, I'll be really happy to hand this to you guys.
Thank you for those comments. I would like to get to public comment unless there's something the council would like to mention at this point. I'd like to make sure we have plenty of time to hear from the public. Is there anything the council would like to mention before we do that? Yeah, Councilman Sishka.
You know, Michael, this letter of intent has stirred some controversy, and I just want to clarify with you that this is a broad brush of a deal. And we are basically establishing a comfort level for the parties so that all feel comfortable to go forward. Is that true?
Yeah, Councilman Sishka, that's dead on. We had to get to a point where we put something on paper that whatever obstacles left were not insurmountable. In other words, we had to deal with the larger macro issues, because if you couldn't agree on those, filling in the detail was kind of a moot point, right? And I think the good news is, you know, I've used this analogy a bunch, if you're running a marathon, we're like on mile, it depends, process-wise, we're not really far out of the gate, but in terms of having general agreement, we're on mile 25. So, you know, a lot of people criticized how we've handled this in terms of lack of transparency and the like. When you look at the detail and the elements that had to go in this to get where we are, there is no way in heck you could have had the kind of negotiation we needed with both the applicant and the interested stakeholders to get to this point. And I know everybody thinks that, you know, there's this good old boy smoking big cigars and hanging out. You can't have substantive commitments, even to this point, without having confidential negotiations. At the end of the day, you know, sometimes you have to have a little faith in your local government and the people that are making decisions. Otherwise, this never gets very far, and I just think that's a good thing for people to realize going forward.
A letter of intent is not typically part of this process, is it?
Absolutely not. None of this is. It's the complexity of all the moving parts that necessitated going away from the script and trying to find a way to make this work. If we'd have handed the initial project to P and Z two and a half years ago, it would have been DOA, would have been done. We'd have all been far, this would have been a rear-view mirror, and the end of the day, we wouldn't have had this acreage, we wouldn't have the acreage by the airports. You would not have this project if you followed normal protocols. So, every once in a while, you have to break the norm and do things to reach agreements like this. And you know what? That's okay.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Thanks, mayor.
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted, that was kind of my point that I wanted to make, is that this LOI, letter of intent, was an extra step that we put into the process in order to bring more transparency to the process. Councilwoman Scholl mentioned that a couple of weeks ago, was that, you know, this is bringing more light, and actually, I'm glad that we're doing this, because there so often we felt like we couldn't talk about what was going on, because none of this should be on the front page of the paper or in the radio, right? So, it's really important that we do this process. And I will tell you, before we go to public, I just want to recognize two people that stayed the course and got this to where we are today, and they brought this home, and that would be Jason Giesi with AED and Michael Lamar with the city of Prescott. And I know it was frustrating at times, but the city stuck with it, and AED stuck with it, and we are all in a better position because of it. So, Michael and Jason, I really want to thank you both.
All right, very good. Thank you for those comments. So, for public comment today, to get to as many people as we possibly can, we are going to limit comments to two minutes. You can have questions. We will log down or take note of those questions, and we will answer those at the voting session later today. For those that are unable to be here for the study session, we will give those people the opportunity to speak at the voting session, but if you speak here today, then we will ask that you not speak at the voting session again later today, so we can get to as many people as possible. We did have a number of comments come in via email, I think 40-some comments that the clerk has, and for the sake of time, I've asked her to combine those into some categories that she can speak to. Many of them were duplicated in terms of concerns over parcel H and that southern boundary, and K and L as well, and whether it should be a resort or nothing, as well as some Indian ruins, and a couple of other things that were mentioned, but a lot of them had duplication. So, for the sake of time, I've asked her to do that, and we'll start with that, then we'll go to public comment.
Thank you, mayor. Yes, we received 46 comments through our online comment submission. I'll go ahead and read all of the names of the comments that we received. I did send them email confirmations that their comments were received, with the exception of some that were received this afternoon, just prior to the meeting, but I'd like for them to know that their comments were received and they were included in the tallies. And I apologize if I mispronounce anybody's names off the top. Steve Finucane, Richard Thompson, Suzanne DeBerge, Julia Watson, Debbie Cotton, Kathy Davis, Mike Davis, Sally Davidson, Stephen Cook, Shirley Colony, Mary Ann and Frank Grafagnio, Therese Holliday, Anne Fitzsimmons, Carolyn Murphy, Walt Anderson, Mark Donovan, Krista Smith, David Pharaoh, Patricia Turpin, Nancy Miller, Harvey Shaw, Eileen Landis-Groom, Joanna Bremmer, Barbara Wellman, Stephen Pope, Thomas Slayback, Margaret Starnes, Rod Smith, Chris Osterdahl, Joanne Allers, Jenica Fay, James Holderer, Sue Marie Basket, Larry Buckler, Cynthia Jones, Joseph Bickel, Lars Fay, Jenny Cobb, Alice Kringle, Stephanie Allen, Deborah Thalostus, Joanne Johnston, Carolyn Young, Michelle Richardson, Elise Depute, and Kathleen Murphy. Of the 46 comments that were received from the public, 20 specifically called out that sections K and L be explicitly labeled "resort" or "nothing," and requested that AED define "eco-resort." 19 specifically discussed moving the southern border of section K in order to protect the Peavine view shed, view shed, sorry. 28 specifically addressed maintaining open space in area H for the preservation of the wildlife corridor, No Name Creek, Native American ruins in the area. Five specifically stated that they supported all of Save the Dells' suggestions for revisions to the LOI. And 10 specifically requested that an under or overpass be considered in lieu of an at-grade crossing. We did also receive a couple of comments not in line with those just mentioned, and I will read those now individually. Shirley Colony, "I just want to echo what so many other residents of this area have expressed. I am saddened to see the number of developments in progress everywhere. No thought to wildlife or natural surroundings, just rooftops and pavement. Keep the Dells intact as much as possible. Changes will still happen all around, and that too is sad and unfortunate. Money does not buy everything, and once nature is gone, it is gone forever. So, please consider saving as much as possible." David Pharaoh, "I don't intend to speak, as I will be working, but I would like my comment to reach council members. In general, I support the letter of intent, but there are problems with maps, I have seen. They show little space around No Name Creek as it nears Granite Creek. Wildlife generally travel near water or washes when the creeks are dry. Also, access to the Granite Creek bed itself is not clearly there for people. There is also something called private open space. What is the purpose of that, and why can't that be open to the public? These and other small details need to be addressed as the final agreement goes forward, such as archaeological sites." Joanne Bremmer, "If you need to tear up more land for housing, cut down our precious water supply, then do it far away from the site that Mother Nature took 1.3 billion years to make. We don't need another hotel or resort either. My strong opinion is stop all the money-grubbing building that we do not need here in Prescott. Isn't it too crowded and too expensive already? Where do us local folks find affordable housing? You're killing the beautiful Dells in Prescott over your stupid greed. Stop this now, and stay away from the precious Dells. Mother Nature is not making any more. Do you ever think how rare the Dells are in the USA even? No, on all development here. I truly hope that this is read to all council, and they wake up and come to their senses. Stop the greed. You'll be six feet under and will have left an incredible, terrible, regretful mess behind." Joseph Bickel, "The southern portion of the proposed development plan by Arizona Eco Development, specifically the portion south of the Point of Rocks junction of Peavine and Iron King Trails, with its accompanying request for annexation to the city of Prescott, would have marked a negative effect on the lands under consideration. Just as importantly, it would have a significant effect on the lands adjoining the AED property. Vitally important among those adjoining areas affected would be the trail corridors through the Dells, although certainly not limited to them. The impacts of a major development in the Dells would be felt throughout our trail systems, their buffer zones, nearby wildlife corridors, and trail view sheds throughout the general area. Specifically, the Peavine, the Iron King, Storm, Lakeshore, and Granite Gardens Trails would all certainly be affected by those proximity to the development, particularly development of the residential type, any road crossings of trails, clearing of vegetation, sound and light population, alteration of natural landscapes, elimination of wildlife migration zones, and the usual impact of rooftops. A major resort would also negatively affect trail corridors, although less so than residential development. These various impacts would also reduce the appeal of trail use in general, including the use of connector trails and the Prescott Circle Trail. Trails in the network currently under construction, such as Glassford Hill Trail or a potential proposed Sun Corridor National Scenic Trail, would suddenly become much less appealing to the recreational trail user in the Prescott area. Such a loss of appeal already occurred along the Prescott Valley portion of Iron King Trail for similar reasons. In short, trail systems need a significant amount of open space to remain desirable places to recreate. The AED proposal of residential development near the trail corridors and its accompanying destruction of natural areas will adversely and permanently affect the Dells area, including its trail systems. Additionally, and just as significantly, the proposal will counter the vision of the Prescott General Plan. For the sake of the quality of life in the Prescott area, which is mentioned several times in the General Plan, the AED proposal needs to be modified to protect our trail corridors and the recreational potential of our scenic Dells area." And that's it.
Okay. Do we have public comment? I know you have some different...
We do not have any public comment from either the basement conference room or the Centennial Center, and I've not received any cards from any member of the public present in chambers.
So, do we... So do we have any comment cards here in the chamber for us at this point? Looks like Officer Cassoon has something there for you.
I would like to say that I really agree with every word that was said by, in this last letter that was read. I think that's very important. But I had some comments, really, that perhaps belong in the next stage of this. But I want you to accept, I can tell you're going to accept this and sign this letter today at three o'clock. And I, I'm hoping that you will make sure that Mr. Giese understands that there are some things that we really need to have within the next stage of this. And one is that I want, I'm hoping, and it was addressed in this last letter, that we, there will be as little recontouring as possible, that they, understanding be, be that they don't just level this whole area one section at a time, like it's happening in a lot of the places where we have development, that they take advantage of the current natural contouring of the land, and that they not just blast out rock formations, that they incorporate them into the given area. I am disturbed that No Name Creek, especially there at the end of G, is just right next to the develop, to the area. And I hope that there can be some drawback of that, so that No Name Creek not be encroached upon so much as it appears to be in Section G. I hope that absolutely you make sure that access to K and L be either over or under Peavine Trail and not cut through Peavine Trail. Anybody who's tried to get into Tlakapaki, for instance, and, and sees the constant struggle between the cars and the pedestrians going over to the parking lot at Tlakapaki realizes that this is going to be very important. Two-hundred-unit resort or timeshare, or whatever he ends up with, is going to generate a tremendous amount of traffic for service, as well as for the people who are there. I hope that you'll require that the, that H and K, where they overlap along the trail, will have wide setbacks from the trail, so that it doesn't look like the trail just runs through an alleyway in a neighborhood or a tunnel in a neighborhood, so that it protects the, the sides of the trail, as you were.
Thank, thank you for your comments.
And one more thing. I hope that housing close to, closer to the trail will have lower roof lines than is usually in multifamily dwellings. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we're getting a few more comment cards. Comment cards are back there on the table, if you'd like to fill one out.
If you'd like to comment on this item, please fill out one of the white comment cards and not one of the, or I'm sorry, no, this is correct. Sorry about that.
First off, I want to thank you all for all the work you're doing on this and et cetera. You know, and also in conjunction with that, what you did when the COVID-19 was in place and allowed people on trails. I live near there in Baltic Avenue, over there in Cliff Roads. One of the things you can say is that all the people who are out on the trails in Peavine, Watson and stuff, out there exercising and stuff, of all different sizes, shapes, and abilities, and it was a good thing, and because you did allow that. So that's one of the things I wanted to point out. Two is that, so, you know, my grandson's with me today, and one of the things that, you know, he had a comment early on in the process when we were talking about this, is that if, you know, AED was smart, they would reduce the number of units, because they could then, they make more money off of the ones that they did sold because of the impact of the eco thing, you know, and also the greatness of the trail system nearby. So it enhances the value of it. And the basic thing that I wrote on the comment card, which is one of the things I want to point out, is that, you know, John Muir, along with Teddy Roosevelt, farther the national park system, you know, one of his comments, which I read when we went to John Muir Woods, you know, with my wife a year ago, was that, you know, "It's not blind opposition to progress, but it is opposition to blind progress." And that's the keynote here, is that, you know, progress is going to happen and et cetera. What you want to do is, you know, find that balance between it, and that's what I hope you're doing. It has made progress on it from what it started at, and that is part of what, you know, Mr. Lamar pointed it out, and you all do. But be gentle about it and understand where you can whittle, and you can pick up here or there. You know, in AED, back to what my grandson said, is that they make a small concession here with some of these things that the people have done, what they're going to have is, you know, not be viewed under the banner of being an ogre with, you know, greed, but they'll be viewed under the banner of someone who has compassion and has conservation in mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
First of all, thank you. I know you guys worked really hard on this, and also thank you to the Granite Dells group who have also worked very hard. It's been quite a process. I have, I try not to comment on anything I don't know too much about, so I'm only going to comment on two things. I raised my family on the trail, and a few years back, my grandson learned to ride his bicycle there. So, and I was very good friends with the Wilkinson, which, to which much of that land belonged. So I'm aware of the land, and I'm aware of the topography, and I am hoping that we can keep that southern border farther north in K, a few less houses, a few houses versus tens of thousands of people who will go on that trail, including our community people, people from the nation, and people from the world. I've brought a lot of people to Prescott, not just from Arizona, but from, throughout the country and the world. And every single one of them says the same thing, wow, you all have no idea how lucky you are to have this area. The other thing I want to talk about is the ruins. I've worked for many years with the Yabopis, and have any of you ever read the book, The Oral History of the Yabopis? Has anybody here ever read that? One person. Well, when you read it, it's devastating, what was done to the Yabopis. They were murdered, they were almost annihilated, and their land was taken. And I think we need to honor them and leave their pit houses alone, or their ancestors' pit houses alone. I think it's really, really important, especially in this day and age, when we're looking at just how terrible prejudice has affected our country. So I hope you keep that in mind. It may not be that important to most people, but it's important to the Yabopis. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Hello. I was just thinking, well, my grandfather tried to point out what I was saying, but I don't think he got it across quite as well. But with the natural, the natural beauty, the property, like, the more that's there, the more the property would be valuable. And if, with less houses, the property would be, be more valuable, and it would also take less time to build all those houses, so that wouldn't make it, the impact less harmful on the people using the Peavine Trail and other trails. So like, it would take a shorter amount of time and effort to build less houses, and their value would be higher. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all that we have from inside chambers.
You said you didn't have anything at Centennial Center?
I don't have anybody at Centennial Center or down in the basement. I do have a couple of people that are on the call. I don't know if you'd like to take Ms. Paula Burr now, or if you want to wait until after all the public comment is done, and then she can speak for Save the Dells. And I do have one caller in the waiting room.
Yeah, let's, let's go with the folks that are waiting on the call in the waiting room.
I will let them in. And I'm going to unmute. They might be on a little bit of a delay, I'm not sure. The number's 445-4218. If you could please state your name, and I will time you for two minutes if you'd like to address council. Are you there?
Hello?
Yes, ma'am. If you could please state your name, and then you'll have two minutes to address council.
Okay, Leslie White.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Leslie.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm not quite, it's hard to tell whether you're hearing me.
Yeah, we, we can hear you.
Okay, good. Thank you. I'm reading this comment as approved yesterday by the Board of the Citizens Water Advocacy Group, or CWAG. CWAG supports the general provisions outlined in the Letter of Intent. However, as the details are negotiated, the city must recognize that each new home increases the overdraft of our groundwater supply and moves the Prescott Active Management Area further from sustainability and safe yield. Therefore, CWAG recommends that the city adopt the following. One, for all new subdivisions outside of Prescott City limits that receive city water, including Section 33, the mixed development, water conservation, and landscape codes must apply, and wastewater must be collected for permanent recharge. Two, transparency. A written contract fully describing the terms of the service agreement must be available for public inspection and comment before approval. Three, the developer must offset their not net groundwater consumption by, for example, capturing stormwater runoff for permanent recharge, by using harvested rainwater, not groundwater, for landscapes, or by other water conservation offset programs. And four, the city should publicly commit in writing to retain and permanently recharge AED's 375-acre foot surface water claim in Watson and Willow Lake. The Citizens Water Advocacy Group appreciates this opportunity to comment, be well. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
Okay. Paula Burr?
Yeah.
Paula, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. There's a bit of a delay between the live video and what we're hearing on the phone, so that's probably why you're getting a little bit of a lag. So, this is Paula Burr, I'm the Vice Chair of Save the Dells Association of the City. I first like to thank all of the parties involved, including the hard people on this front. That includes AED, the council and town staff, Save the Dells, and most importantly, the community for continuing to spend days, which is a very important accomplishment. This Letter of Intent is an encouraging first step, and I think it gives us a good framework for the development agreement that will follow, and I support the council voting to approve the Letter of Intent there in the voting session this afternoon.
Paula, I'm sorry to cut you off. Can you speak up a little bit, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
As you, okay. As we move forward, however, I think it's important to recognize that this Letter of Intent is not the final plan, and that there are areas of improvement that Save the Dells and hopefully the city will continue to push for. One of the areas I'd like to speak up just quickly is the development of K and L. And while the Letter of Intent lays out important guidelines for the eco-resort, this plan in this area, it does fall short by not designating that this area will be developed as a resort or nothing. And I don't characterize that as a negative statement. I think it's a very important statement to be made. This is a point where the city and Save the Dells have long been in agreement, and this highly visible ridge should be developed as a low-profile eco-resort or nothing. We need to make sure that the final development agreement lays this out explicitly and includes measures that will ensure that it cannot be changed within mere amendment of the development plan at a later date. Thank you very much, and I do appreciate everyone's efforts in this.
Thank you, Paula. Thanks for calling in.
Thank you, Mayor.
What else do you have there, sir?
That is all.
Okay. Okay. While we're waiting on that one, Mr. Palladini, because we have time here, are there a few of these things that you'd like to address now?
Well, certainly, Mayor and Council, I can address the CWAG for requests, three of the four, I think we can sort of check off as, as mission accomplished, at least in concept. Things like requiring rainwater harvesting or those things are certainly appropriate for discussion in, in the development agreement, but, but I think, as the city manager said, they just aren't appropriate in, in this type of, at this level, at the wave tops or the 30,000-foot level. I think that, again, I think the Letter of Intent is clear, the development agreement is clear, parcels K and L will be for resort. I don't think we have to say "or nothing," it's, it's, will be resort. The other comment I heard quite a bit of is sort of setbacks and buffers between the trail and development, that the Planning Commission and the council will go through, and the city has setback requirements, and again, and where on the sort of bottom of parcel G, the city has setback requirements as part of the zoning, as part of the Planning and Zoning Commission process that will be determined, that will be negotiated, but there are certainly minimal setbacks. I don't think anybody should expect that there's going to be walls along the trail. I mean, we have setbacks, and I know a lot of the discussion in the past had to do with sort of wall-less type development, you know, so that there was, that increased or enhanced the visibility and view shed off of the trail. And again, part of the creek is, is going to be flood zone, so there are those limitations in terms of parcel G, and what could be developed near, near the creek as it, as it runs along the outside, I think you see on the map, the outside of parcel G. But flood zones and floodways, and, you know, will certainly also drive how the thing is developed. Point out the AED, where it says AED, private open space, that's basically creek bottom. It's part, it would be part of the internal open space that AED will develop as it develops the, the development plan in the neighborhoods on parcels A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H. To be honest with you, I don't think the city wants it. I would recommend not having it. It's creek bottom. It's really not recreational. It's floodway, and not a whole lot, even if we said, yeah, go ahead and build houses, there's no way that FEMA would allow houses to go in there. So there's a certain amount of, of maintenance obligation and operation obligation, and creek bottom is, is higher than, you know, rocks and, and trails and things like that. So it's not something we'd really want. Nobody really commented on North Parcel. Again, the parcel 33 is, it's from, from a, from a water service and sewer service standpoint, it's as if it were in the city. I think that's the best way to put it. You know, it, it will be developed, if it's annexed into PV, or if it remains unannexed, it will develop under those land development codes, either county or town of Prescott Valley. But from a water sewer standpoint, it just, it is, in simplest terms, it's as if it's developing in the City of Prescott.
Plus the surcharge.
Plus the 30% surcharge, so there is actually a benefit, essentially a subsidy, if you will, to, to the in-city users. I think I've addressed most of the comments, at least globally. I'm happy to respond to any other questions or comments that are, that are out there.
Miss Roman. It dovetails on John's comments about the Peavine and the vehicular traffic and pedestrian traffic in terms of the crossing. I think there's a commitment on everybody's part to do whatever we can to make sure that there's a separation between the Peavine Trail for pedestrians and bikes, or culists, and vehicular traffic. What that looks like, I don't know yet, but I would be very surprised at the end of the day if that becomes an issue.
Yeah, very good. All right. You have one more comment, sir?
I do. Joe Trudeau.
Hello. Hello, Mr. Mayor and Council, and Michael and attorney. I just want to express on behalf of Save the Dells and the greater movement for, for saving the Dells...